Meeting to order will begin with an invocation. I've asked Commissioner Fortner to do that.
If you bow your head, Heavenly Father, there's so many things happening in our community that's impacting our health and our economy. We ask for your direction and all the decisions that we are making today and each day that will impact our community. I pray for our Aztec community and everyone who's impacted on this very day, Lord, by what happened as a tragedy at the Aztec High School. I pray, Lord, also for those that were impacted by Pearl Harbor, Lord, as we, it's been 80 years ago, Heavenly Father, that people lost loved ones during that day. I also continue to pray for those in healthcare who are caring for the sick in the midst of this pandemic. Touch the hearts of the individuals who can impact the outcome of the continued spread of this disease. Please heal our country and world from this illness in discord that continues to plague us. I pray that you're with us in our midst and that your peace will be with us in Jesus's name. Amen.
You'd follow me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to a few presentations to begin with. And we're going to start with the fiscal year 21 Director's Award, and I believe that's going to be presented by Jim Cox.
Mr. Chair, good afternoon. I actually have to say this is something I'm very excited to be standing before you all to presenting to our very own Chief Financial Officer, Kim Martin, for the FY21 Director's Award. Annually, each year, the Department of Finance Administration, Local Government Division, evaluates all of the local governments within the state of Mexico and looks at, you know, who stands out amongst the others related to not only the day-to-day practices, but where we would excel in budgeting and financial reporting. So I'm very excited to say that for FY21, San Juan County was nominated and received the Director's Award. A little bit behind that award, Mr. Stark and I, to our best of our knowledge, we weren't aware of such an award. So this is a new award and something that, you know, it's through that hard work dedication of Kim and her staff. Also, really just all of the elected offices and departments for maintaining that compliance that such an award is possible. So a couple of things that were concluded upon to help us get the award was that LGD concluded that Finance Department was proficient in governmental accounting and provided detailed monthly reports to the County Commission on a current economic status and future forecasting. They also concluded that all the financial reports were accurate, reconciled and balanced, and also that our accounting system was seamless with the state's accounting system. They also conclude that we have a very good relationship with the state and with our local government rep. And lastly, they concluded that the county has a long-term plan for maintaining economic stability in anticipation of San Juan generating station closure in 2022. So on behalf of the County Commission and Commissioners, I would ask you to come down and present this to Kim Martin. It says the 2021 Director's Award, San Juan County, providing budget management and fiscal integrity to benefit the citizens of their community. And New Mexico Department of Finance Administration, Local Department of
Commissioner, we could probably get you the picture if you just stayed right there. Devin's a whiz with his camera. All right, we have our second presentation is for an organization that is near and dear to my heart and one of my favorite places. The Lower Valley Senior Center received a present or an award for Aging and Long-Term Services Special Recognition and Appreciation Award. Michelle Murray is our Senior Services Coordinator. I'm going to have her first come up, and then here in just a second, we'll have her introduce her staff and have them come up as well. But she was recently presented with a Special Recognition and Appreciation Award by Aging and Long-Term Services for the Lower Valley Senior Center. The award recognizes senior centers for their dedicated service accomplishments in continued response to New Mexico's older adults during the COVID-19 public health emergency. As a commission, we want to thank Michelle and her staff for all their outstanding work that they've done through this. And we'll have Michelle, if you'll introduce your staff members and have them come up, and then we'll come down and present you with the award. You got to call them out by name.
Okay, so I'll just go by, let's do Arlene first.
Arlene, come on up.
Arlene Russell. She's an aide at Lower Valley.
All right.
Harriet Rock is next. She is my driver and she delivers over 50 meals a day to our homebound clients. Next is Luella Benalison. She's my head cook at Lower Valley.
She's the popular one, then.
She cooks about 250 meals a day. And then Trevor is my cookout in Blanco, and she serves all of Blanco area.
Awesome. Well, we want to thank all of you for everything that you do for our seniors. We know that our senior population has been hit hard with COVID-19, and we appreciate all the efforts that you're making to help them and all that they do. And we're going to come down and present you with this. I think Hollywood's going to take some pictures again, and but thank you for all that you do. All right, so that brings us to a portion of our regular meeting. We need to approve the agenda, so I'll stand for any motions regarding the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any changes.
No modifications. Having been moved and seconded, those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We don't have to wait on the delay. Mike, thanks for being here. It's always great to see you here. Brings us to our consent agenda. Item number one is consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes of November 9, 2021. Number two is consideration of approval of treasurer check register for November 2021. Number three is consideration of approval of finance check registers for November 2021. Number four is consideration of approval of resolution number 212236, fiscal year 22 budget adjustment number four. And those are the four consent items. Does anybody wish to remove any consent items for further consideration? Not seeing any motions, I'll stand for a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, passes unanimously. Brings us to new business, item number one, which is consideration of County Commission redistricting plan as presented by Mike Stark and Rod Adair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. As you know, San Juan County is required to redraw the County Commission boundaries in order to comply with the one-person-one-vote principle established by the U.S. Constitution. To assist us with this matter, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, we hired Rod Adair with New Mexico Demographic Research and is here with us tonight. So the guidelines used to redraw the boundaries include the following. A district shall be equal in population as practical, population that deviates plus or minus 5% from the ideal. San Juan County's population per the last census was 121,661. Therefore, the ideal population would be 24,332 per Commission District. Districts shall not be comprised of split precincts. Districts shall also be contiguous precincts and reasonably compact with an attempt to preserve communities of interest. And last but not least, not dilute a protected minority's voting strength. So what we've done is staff conducted a public input meeting on November 30, and that was attended by three commissioners as well as other staff. And we received, I'm sorry, I said November 30. We, that's correct, we did do it on November 30. My apologies. And we had three draft plans that Mr. Adair had put forth, as well as a plan that was submitted by the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission. So we had four plans up in this very room. It was an open house style format to allow folks to walk around and interact with the maps and provide us with comment. I do want to note that the hearing notice was published in the Farmington Daily Times via two display ads. There was also an article about a week and a half prior to the November 30 meeting on the redistricting process. And Mr. Neely had sent out a press release to all media outlets to include radio, TV and newspapers, as well as this effort being advertised on the San Juan County website. We had a total of 13 individuals attend the hearing conducted by Mr. Adair and county staff. Brief summary of the meeting, Mr. Adair opened the meeting by giving a summary of the redistricting process and a brief description of the four maps presented at the meeting. And then ultimately, staff shared the individuals who were not present at the meeting because there were some concern about folks that didn't make it to the meeting, that they would have the opportunity to still provide comments as we had all of the maps posted on our website. And we did actually receive, just before the meeting tonight, public comments. So that process did work. So we'll share those comments with you when the time's appropriate. And so due to public comment, we did have another map that was developed, and that actually sits behind you tonight. I know Mr. Adair will speak to that. That's a map that was developed, we refer to it as option A4. And so that came from direct input at the public meeting that we had. So with that, I'd like to turn over time to Mr. Adair, because I know he would like to share some thoughts on the item before you tonight and the decision you all have to make regarding the right redistricting map for San Juan County. I'll turn it over to Mr. Adair.
Thank you, Mr. Stark and the members of the Commission. I think you have now before you, the internet connection is too weak for me to get connected to my program. But I think you have plans A, B, C, D, and now A1, A2, 3, and 4. So you have maybe eight plans or seven plans right now in front of you. So I'd be happy to take any questions you might have. Well, I can speak to what was added last night with regard to A3. A3 was, I think, suggested by Commissioner Lototachi. And then there were some modifications requested.
A1.
A1, okay. Then I've forgotten who requested A2 and A3. We got some modifications to A3 last night to move precinct 11 from District 2 to District 1. And that worked fine. We also had a request to move precinct 18 from District 1 to District 2. And then to move precinct 23 from District 1 to District 5. When all that was in precinct 105 from District 5 to District 2, everything was within the permissible deviation limits. However, we had to move precinct 18 back from District 2, back into District 1 in order to bring District 1 back into permissible deviation. District 1 had been left at minus 7.22%. And so precinct 18 with 1,298 people, and it had to be moved back into District 1 to make all five districts fit within the allowable deviation. All of, Plan A, in essence, is sort of the least change. But there have been, you know, a lot of back and forth between District 1 and District 2 to get that balance right, at least in the eyes of some Commissioners. Plan A, with the last modification to it, A4, will leave District 1 at slightly over 80% Native American and District 2 at just at 55% Native American. Currently, those percentages are about 89 and 47, respectively. And so that is a better balance in that, for the whole county.
I don't understand why we even have to do anything. I hear what you're saying about the numbers.
You're required by New Mexico statute to redistrict every 10 years. You don't, you wouldn't have to do anything if you came in and looked at the numbers and the five districts were all within 5% of the ideal. And some counties have been like that. Their population movement was such that it was uniform. It's rare, but there's three or four counties like that. I know I looked at them and worked for them to look at that. They don't have to do anything. But a couple of your districts came in at plus 10%, plus 6%, minus 6%, something like that. And so they were not within the 5% either way of the ideal size for your county. You divide 100 and, I think it's 140 You divide 100 and I think it's 148,661.
121.
121, excuse me. I'm working for Sandoval County too. 121 661 and by five, and then you get
24,332.
24,332, and you have to be within 5% of that, which is only 1,200 and something. No, the area does not make any difference. Just like, just as in a, in a state, in the state house, you have somebody representing northeast New Mexico and they have, they represent a district that's the size of Massachusetts. You have someone representing inner city Albuquerque and they have a district that's three or four square miles. So just as in the U.S. Congress, you have people in Manhattan representing a few acres and you have Yvette Harrell representing roughly 60,000 square miles. It's all based on population. It's based on population right now. Based on the population as of April 1st, 2020.
Which, which map were we talking about last?
A4 is the one we were talking about last.
What's on there? Is it new enough that's not going to be on there?
I think it is. It's, it's, it can be up there.
It'll be A4.
That's A4 on the, on the screen currently? I don't know.
Yes, yes, it is.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Does, does this comply with all of the requirements of the statute?
Yes. Yes, it does, Commissioner.
A4 is the redactor.
Let's see.
What happens if we don't, if we just don't to find a hair?
The, the power of redistricting rests solely with the body that has to redistrict. So the county commission, majority of the county commission can redistrict in any way they wish as long as it meets the, the 5% variance and everything is, the districts are contiguous and meet other, other legal requirements.
Does Plan A meet all the legal requirements?
It does ostensibly, Plan A. But as I've discussed with the county manager, I, I think that it would be, I think it would expose the, the county somewhat in that Plan A
be in line because
Plan, Plan A moves the non-Hispanic Indian population of District 2 from 47 to 44. And e- even though what I was trying to do was to, to move the fewest amount of precincts necessary to make it balance, the reality is that you should at least hold District 2 to 47%, 47.04, which is what it is right now.
And there is something to say about the least amount of disruption. I mean, there's
Yes.
Because some of the things that we look at are communities that should stay together, vote together so that they're not represented by somebody who is not a part of their community. Is that accurate?
Sure. Communities of interest are valuable.
Is that what communities of interest means is, is to keep communities together under the same commission, in districts? So that by somebody from their community?
Yes, that can be one of the, one of the definitions of community of interest, yes.
And we just got the A4 today?
Mr. Chairman, we actually got it last night. But yeah, for all practical purposes, I emailed it out this morning at 5:30 or so.
A4 makes the non-Hispanic Indian population 51.47% for District 2 and 82.78 for District 1. And that maintains the current level of Indian percentage within District 2, whereas Plan A by itself does not do that. Plan A2, Plan A3, Plan A4 are all more acceptable than, than Plan A.
2, 3, and 4, but is there an A1?
Well, maybe.
Need to stay.
Stay could be really work.
Was that the one I, I actually just that?
Yes, A1. A1 is also
Could be that District 2 convinced it back to A3. They were accidentally let go.
A1.
My data set here is You're missing 2 and missing 2 and 4.
So A2, 3, and 4 comply with statutory requirements and the percentage of population so that it doesn't decrease. Is that, is that
That, that's correct, yeah. Plans A2 and A3, for instance, are 80 and 54.5. Plan A4 is, is 82 and 51.4. That might be a better compromise somewhere in between the 47 and the, and the, and the 54 for District 2. But Plan A, I certainly would, would not recommend adopting it since you have other plans before you that hold the District 2 Indian percentage at the current level or higher.
Mr. Chair, I have the A1 population demographic data. Do you still remember you looking for in the A1?
What, what is the District 2 non-Hispanic Indian?
40.84. Voting age is 39.9.
That's A2?
A1.
A1?
A1. You referenced A1 earlier. You're looking for A4 though. You had A4. A4 is in there.
Okay, well, I that's the, then A, then A1 is not, if, if it's 40.84, then that's, that's not a good number either.
Correct. Mr. Chair, I believe that's why the other iterations of, of the A plan were proposed because A1 did not be
Right.
Chairman. Mike, do we have anything that has like all of this information to where I could show Commissioner Sullivan instead of on all these separate pages? Do we have anything that shows like A in, in, like maybe in some sort of an Excel list instead of flipping through?
We did not. We just used what Mr. Adair provided us.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think that let's kind of talk about some of the other plans. So we know A, there's different options in A that are potentially acceptable. What about Plan B? Where, where are we at with that? What, what would you recommend? I guess is what I'm getting at.
Plan B of is a is, is a plan that attempts to have as equal a population as you can have for each district so that everybody has precisely the same amount of power with regard to how they exercise it through the county commission without splitting a precinct at all. So you have, you have deviations of only 0.2, 0.3, 0.4, 0.3, 0.4. Just deviations between 54 people and 107 out of an ideal population of 24,000. So
What does that do with the Navajo or native population?
The native population for districts 1 and 2 would be 79 and 50. And so that's, that's a, that's a, it's a good, it's a good plan because it holds, it holds the District 2 at, at where it is now, slightly higher, about, about two points, two and a half, three points. It doesn't, it doesn't diminish or dilute the Indian voting population in District 2. Whereas Plan A slightly does so. Plan B is, makes the Indian population of districts 1 and 2 79.2 and 49.97, almost exactly 50%. And so that is, that's better than Plan A because Plan A moves it from 47 to 44, 44.2 or something like that in, in District 2.
Mike, can you speak to that or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sullivan, you referring to the article in the, for the op-ed in today's Albuquerque Journal? I would not be able to speak to what's happened in Sandoval County this remote.
I haven't seen it. What did the op-ed say? I didn't see it.
Can read it.
Okay.
If it's but it basically It, the, the title of the op-ed was "Sandoval County Maps Ignore Native Groups Concerns." Jury-Mannered Plan by GOP Contractor Would Favor Party Silence Many Others. It went through a long dissertation about not taking into account the
Is that from Laura Montoya?
It is.
Okay.
Mike, I think that we're addressing that here, so
I would agree.
And, and I, I dress, it's, it's a fair question. I'll be happy to answer it. Sandoval County has a much, has a lower population, total native population than San Juan County. But what I did there was to go back to where they were 20 years ago, which is to have a district that is 45, 46% Native American. It's a combination of pueblos in Navajos at Ojo Encino and and other, other chapters in the, the northwest part. What, what they did was the Democratic Party of Sandoval County drew its own plan. And came in and said they would rather have two districts with 23% each rather than one district with 46%. Which goes against everything that I've done for the last to, they, they came in and split the Indian population so they will not be able to elect anybody from I, any of the districts. And then they, they, they were kind of threatening and, and everything and semi well, I was escorted to my car by a deputy sheriff. Let me put it that way. But there, how can I put this as delicately as possible? They're lying. Nobody in the business of redistricting, and you can talk to redistricting, redistricting attorneys all across the country, nobody would take an, an area where you have seven pueblos and parts of or all of four chapters of the Navajo Nation and divide that into two groups of 23% in two different districts. I put them all into one district. The way it was before they, I don't know who redistricted in 2011. It wasn't me. But before that, they had three straight Native American commissioners, Joshua Madalena and then Darrell Madalena twice in a row. And they were able to win Democratic primaries in 2004, 2008, and 2012. In 2016, it was carried by a, a non-Indian. And and now they're wanting to, and they, they left the district at 37% Indian. I'm putting it at 46% Indian. And, and they're, they're wanting it split into two for 23%. So they won't be able to elect anybody.
Well, I, I, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole. We're not here to talk about Sandoval County. Let's talk about San Juan County.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Table it or do Plan A?
Okay, let's finish, can we finish discussion first? Or I, I guess there's a standing motion. Is there a second?
Do we have time? Let's look at it more.
Before we vote, there'll be, I'll ask if there's any other discussion.
Okay, he's making a motion to table it, right?
Either table it or do Plan A. I think is what the motion was. I don't, I don't think you can do a table and so, Mike, why don't we propose this? Let's finish our discussion and then we can stand for a motion at that point after we complete our discussion. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Chairman, he's withdrawing his motion.
Are you withdrawing your motion, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, I'll withdraw.
Okay. So that was Plan B. What's the next plan that we need to talk about?
Well, Plan C is a perfect plan, but it splits precincts and
We can't do that.
You can, but I don't recommend it.
Okay.
Okay. And I don't think our clerk would appreciate it if we did that. So Plan C, let's not talk about. There's also the
Plan D.
Plan
D or B? B, that's Navajo Nations.
The, the, from the Navajo Nation.
The Navajo Nation plan is an excellent plan.
Okay.
Just, just as they did with the city of Gallup for whom I'm working, they submitted an excellent plan there. And the Navajo Nation plan is a superb plan.
Describe that to us. Why is it, why is it superb?
Well, it, 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 it takes your quite substantive Native American population, which is the largest population in the county. And it divides it more or less evenly between districts 1 and 2. one and two, giving them roughly equal chances to to each other, at least, to electing someone from their own particular ethnic group. I think it I think it splits it into 63 and 62% instead of 89 and 47 as it currently is now, or 81 and 50 as some of the plans have. It makes it 63 and 62. Roughly five-eighths of each of each district would then be Native American.
Commissioner Tocqueen, as far as your district now is currently, the people in Crystal and Nook, what community or chapter house or community do they more align with?
They don't. Yeah, it'd be it'd be harder for them because on the District Two side, they're more like towards Crown Point. It's a kind of eastern agency. I mean, even though it's in the northern Navajo Nation, but they they tend to look towards Crown Point. I don't know.
What's your view? What's your view on this plan?
The way that I know Navajo Nation, human rights that they wanted the chapters to be together, but then they they include La Plata area to District One, which I I wonder about because I that's breaking up a community there.
Well, it's it's not possible to get exactly two districts without having some people who are not necessarily Native American. And so when they you can tell that when they reached that point, they had to add 1,000 people in order to make sure that District One was still within the 5% of the ideal.
Yeah.
That's the only reason they added that in. They didn't add it in because they believed that the La Plata residents necessarily belonged to the same community of interest, but they had to pick one precinct somewhere to to make the population even out, and that's what they chose. Now, they could have chosen something else in Farmington that's only three or four or five% Native American, but they chose La Plata, which is higher than that.
Then we're back to the.
A4.
A the As, A Plans.
A4 is an is an excellent, four As. A4 is an excellent plan.
So, Mr. Chairman, so what what would be the most disruptive plan that you can see?
Most disruptive? Oh, that would probably be the perfect plan.
So that one.
No, well, it disrupts the work of the county clerk in a certain sense.
Right, but it would be the the most changes because you're.
Most changes because you have a number of precinct splits.
Which one would be the least?
Well, I guess it would have to come from among the the A, the Plan, the A Plans, one version of the A Plans somewhere. And.
Because because the way the way I look at it is, you know, we're representing these Where are they going to be the most confused? So when I looked at the plans, if you look, the ones with the most change in it is going to confuse, you know, those those voters. And so which one do you, in just your opinion, because, you know, we were in the meeting together, would would cause less confusion?
I would say any of the array of A Plans would cause less confusion, although I don't I don't think that's a big issue. I mean, legislature is about to.
Redo the whole thing.
Very radically. And so voters will be told who their where their districts are, and people will run from those and.
Right.
You'll get the ballot face correct on their ballot when you get it, and there'll be campaigns and things like that. So I don't think that's a big issue particularly.
And and I say that because, you know, when I look at the Navajo Nation one, I see a lot of changes. I see a lot of disruption. And when they came to us with with the, yeah, the different precincts that they had brought us earlier, that was one of their complaints is is they don't want to disrupt the voters knowing where to go to vote, knowing where they belong, what precinct.
Which district they're in.
Yeah, which district they're in. So so as a representative of all of the county, that's what I'm looking at. And so I'm just curious, you know, leaving the leaving the state out because that's I understand what you're saying there, but that's going to be completely different than what's been brought before us.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, you didn't draw the precincts the way that they.
No.
Okay, the way that they wanted them drawn from the Navajo Nation, right?
Chairman and members of the Commission and Rod Adair, the Commission decide to make changes, but they the precincts that we have are not fully chapter boundary.
Okay, because I certainly, when I was asked about that, I didn't I certainly wouldn't support making your precincts along chapter boundary lines because they don't necessarily conform with visible geographical features. So on the other hand, the plan that they've submitted. What plan do we have up here right now? Okay, as you can see, the area in the pink and then the light green, that is that is where the Native American population in San Juan County lives in terms of making up the bulk of each one of those identifiable precincts that you see up there. Your current your current map, where you go off into the extreme northeast, you start running out of Native American population within those precincts. They get very relatively small. And so, oh, this has gone away again. Yeah. Okay. You can see that this area, it's doesn't have much in the way of population. Their plan identifies where will be 100 and 150. They've cited that and it in many ways makes makes more sense, certainly makes more sense for the Navajo Nation. Now, whether it does for the county, that's up to the people who live here and know it better better than I. And. Okay, so the A Plans, especially A4 perhaps and A3, they they take that into account, but it is not as drastic a change as the Navajo Nation plan is, but it's still it recognizes that you can increase the percentage of Native Americans in District Two, and you can slightly decrease the percentage of Native Americans in District One and have them more balanced. But you're not you're not reducing or diluting a a voting segment in District Two. District One has with 80%, it's certainly less, it's fewer than 89%, but 80% is there's no state senate or state house district that I know of that is above 80%. We have several right at 80%.
Yeah, I think that that gives a lot to consider. I think I'm going to agree with with Mr. Sullivan. I think I think we definitely need to, yeah, go ahead and table this. Do you want to make that motion or do you want?
I don't care.
Yeah, I would just I would move that we we table this till or December 30th.
First.
December 21st is our next meeting. Regular schedule. We could we could certainly, so we'd have a special meeting outside of that time, if you'd like.
So I'll just make a motion to to table this till later and then we'll.
So, having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Would this be, do we need to read the comments regarding this into into it now? We're not in a hearing now, but I I think it would be appropriate to hear those comments.
Let's say, yeah, I think so.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would agree. We did indicate to folks that attended the hearing that we would read any comments that we received. So I can quickly read these into the record if you'd like me to do so.
Please.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first comment is from Etta Arviso. Her comment was, "Map I Pick is Navajo Nation Map by Human Rights Did, and There Needs To Be More Time to Let Public Notices on Radio, Newspaper Navajo Times and Farmington New Mexico Newspaper. We Need That Respect Around Our Navajo Communities Explained in Navajo to Have Better Understanding." Thank you. That was the first comment. The second comment was from Ms. Lauren Bernali. Comment reads as follows, "SJC Commissioners, I support the map submitted by the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission. While the display of all maps does not allow for the detailed data review, which is essential for viewers for reference with the maps, my access to shape files allows me to make a more informed decision. Navajo Nation's maps of Districts One and Two provide a 63%," assuming this is Native Americans, NAVAP. I believe that stands for Native American Voting Age Population.
Yes.
"where Native Americans can elect a candidate of their choice. District Five is an influence district that will allow Native Americans to have substantial input with the selection of a candidate that would support the values and interests of Native Americans. It is clear the NAVAP in San Juan County is growing and thus equal protection under the law must be afforded Native voters the opportunity to elect candidates of their choice. By unpacking District One of SJC's Consultants Map, A, B, and C, you will comply with the VRA Voting Rights Act and allow for the opportunity for equal minority representation in San Juan County Government. Navajo people have occupied the northwest region since time immemorial, and since this time, we assume elected leadership positions in county, city, and school district governments. The map provided by the Navajo Nation clearly allows for this opportunity. I urge SJC Commission, support this map as the future of SJC depends on Navajo assets and resources that we rarely see returned to our Navajo. Taxpaying citizens on and off the Navajo Nation do what is right this time." The next comment comes from Songtri Pioch, I believe I present.
Pioch.
Pioch, thank you, Commissioner. She is the Vice Chair of the Native American Democratic Caucus of New Mexico. Honorable Commission, thank you for your service to our community. I am ready to express my support for the map submitted by the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission and not the recommended map submitted by Rod Adair. Native Americans deserve fair representation, and I strongly believe the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission map does that. Thank you for your discernment and acknowledgement of all constituents' inputs input. Should you have any questions, please contact me." And the last comment is from Mr. Leonard Gorman. It was submitted the night of the redistricting input meeting we had here in the Commission Chambers. Here are the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission comments on San Juan County's New Mexico redistricting maps. Number one, plans A, B, and C created by the county's mapper Rod Adair packs Native American voting age population in District One. Packing is evident in all plans A, B, and C created by Mr. Adair. Packing is a form of placing minority population in a targeted district that creates a situation in which the minority population do not have the ability to influence and or elect a candidate of their choice in other districts. It is clear in this case, plans A, B, and C do not permit Navajo voters in having the ability to elect candidates of their choice in District Two of the plans. District One in all of Adair plans needs to be unpacked in order to share the NAVAP with District Two. Point number two, the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission map that was submitted and for consideration by the public this evening, November 30, 2021, provides for unpacking NAVAP in District One and B, or in District One, and B shares the NAVAP with District Two. This proposal creates an opportunity for two instead of one, Native American majority minority districts. Having 70 to 80% NAVAP in the Native American majority minority district is not necessary. The 62 to 65% NAVAP majority minority Native American district is sufficient to allow the Native Americans, parentheses, Navajos, in that district to elect candidates, elect candidate of their choice. In the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission proposal, the NAVAP are both 63%. In accord with New Mexico case law, 63% NAVAP is a standard that provides for Native Americans to elect candidates of their choice. San Juan County Commission must consider and adopt the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission redistricting map because it satisfies the standard of producing majority minority in Native American district illustrated in the proposed map in accord with Section Two of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. Plans A, B, and C do not provide for Native Americans in Districts Two to elect candidates of their choice because the NAVAP percentages are well below the 63% threshold. We did also receive a resolution from the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission that I would like to present to the county clerk to have it included in the record instead of reading its very lengthy with a few maps. It did it did pass the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission on a vote of four to zero. So I'll present that with your permission, Mr. Chairman and Clerk.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
All right, having, is there any further discussion from the Commission? Mr. Adair, what did you have to say?
I just wanted to point out that while there's validity to some of the comments, that two of the three plans that that I proposed did raise the District District Two level and did did unpack District One from what it is. Now, you have to realize that this so-called packing is what you are now. This is where you are now. And the most, to be fair, the most opposition that I got to raising District Two to lowering District One is from a Native American as well. So I don't know where you would like to go with this whole thing, but you're going to have to choose between having your current situation, which is 89% Navajo in one district and 47% in another, either choose something in between that, which apparently doesn't I don't want to see you be taken to court or anything. I'm trying to present you with a middle ground approach.
Usually the middle ground, there's always somebody on each end that's not completely happy with it. We appreciate your efforts. I think with the addition of the A4, just getting it this morning, I think there's some Commissioners that want to look into that a little bit more. I'm basing that on your motion table. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or discussion before we take a vote?
I was just curious, how many of those people that are on there voiced their opposition to all of this and to Mr. Adair were at the meeting the other night?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sullivan, Etta Arviso was at the meeting.
Right.
And Mr. Gorman did send us a note prior to the meeting, wanting to attend, you know, via the internet, via the via the web. We didn't have that as an option since it was an open house type format, so he he followed up with his comments. That was the email comments that I read to you prior to the meeting, wanting to have those included within the record.
Mr. Chair, at some point, if the if the Commission would like, and I've done this in other places where.
Mr. Chair, at some point, if the commission would like, and I've done this in other places where they get down to a point where they simply can't agree about how things move. I can, I can open up the software and you can, you can see in real time changes and moves by precinct. So you can say, okay, this is, this is, let's move it here, let's move here, let's take this out. We can walk through that. It usually doesn't take very long for people to realize that your options are somewhat limited. And.
I think once we all get a chance to really look at the new plans proposed under A, relation to everything else, assuming we don't get a bunch of new plans right before the next meeting, I think we'll have a better idea of which route we want to go. Would you be available on the 21st?
That would be the last day that I'm available in December, yes.
So we'll take that into consideration if the motion to table passes. Because it may be necessary to open the software and do that if we can't come to an agreement, so. One more.
I have a question. Navajo Nation is a sovereign nation, right? And to ensure that Navajos participate in, you know, the county. I guess those precincts were created and the district was created, right? But it's interesting how it's called packing. But that's, you know, the Navajo Nation is there, the voters are there. But then you want to distribute it all like this.
I think you're saying it's kind of naturally packed.
Yeah, it's naturally packed.
It is naturally packed, but you know, the Navajo Nation is 40%, has been 40% roughly of this county for the last four decades that I've been looking at the data. And the 40% times five is two. And so they see that everybody can do that math. And if I had drawn a map where, because you have some precincts that are 93, 97, 98, 9% Navajo. Some of them are like that. So it'd be possible to draw a district that's not, like yours is currently 88. Thing, able to draw one and meet the ideal with 95%. Now that would be really packing. You could be, and you can make a case that yours is packed right now. It's already packed at 88, 89.
It's because we're a sovereign nation.
That's right. And what they're trying to do is unpack it and put some into District 2 so that District 2 has a better, a better percentage of Navajo voters.
And that's based on population, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so we keep it packed?
No, you can't really pack, you can't pack both of them. They've achieved about what they can achieve, about the top 63 and 62 is about as balanced as you could possibly get in this county or two districts.
Well, all I can say is in the future, you know, as people migrate and come and move into the cities, just like recently, we had a Navajo run for Farmington City Council, right? I mean, there's, depending on what the issue is, you know, some leaders rise to the occasion and they can convince people of all colors to vote for them. So maybe that's common, but.
But redistricting is about now.
Yeah.
It's just like the census, which is the April 1st, 2020, it's about now. I had a call from a county manager two days ago.
Yeah.
He said, well, I think here's what we're going to do. We've looked around and the growth in the city is going to be here, so we're going to move this precinct over here. And because this is where all the growth is coming. And I said, you do that and that, your district is 20% greater than ideal. Yeah, but that's where the growth is coming in. That's not what you're supposed to do. You can't do that.
Yeah.
Unlawful. It's where we are now, not trying to guess what's going to happen in future. You've got a slice in time and the mandate that you have is one person, one vote, equal districts.
So, but who drew the district lines then? Did we do that as a county?
You did that in 2001 and 2011, you drew the district lines. Now, the precincts go back, many of them go back 60 or 70 years.
Okay.
And they're done. Some of them have been changed through the years because they were done on section lines, which are oftentimes not visible. And the Census Bureau in the 1990s said stop doing that. You have to have a visible geographical feature, even if it's a ridge line, which is difficult. But the precincts are completely different thing and many of them go back many decades.
Well, I guess we can discuss this more thoroughly if it is tabled and we can really hash it out.
Not seeing any other discussion, those in favor of tabling this item, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, it's tabled until it's taken up at a meeting down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number two, which is consideration of approval of First Amendment to the Real Estate Purchase Option Agreement with Libertad LLC, presented by Joe Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In September 2018, the county executed a real estate purchase option agreement with Libertad Power LLC. And the original agreement is set to expire in 2022. But Libertad has approached the county seeking to extend and amend the agreement. So with your permission, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Dan Klein, who's the managing partner with Libertad Power, and he'll fill in the details of the amendment. I think he's online.
Sam Devon?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you all for this opportunity to speak before the commission. As Joe said, I'm Dan Klein, I'm a managing partner in Libertad Power, we're a New Mexico LLC. Collectively, the six Libertad partners have over 200 years of relevant project experience. We want to thank the commission for your past support of our efforts and describe three modifications to our existing real estate option agreement. It will strengthen the county's efforts to become a regional hydrogen hub. If I may have about four minutes of your time, I can better describe the opportunity before us. As background, Libertad was initially formed with the objective of developing emerging energy opportunities in San Juan Basin, particularly natural gas fire generation. San Juan County is highly attractive for this given its abundant gas supplies, transmission infrastructure, well-trained workforce, and other positive attributes. In 2018, Libertad Power in San Juan County signed a real estate option agreement. The agreement grants Libertad an exclusive option to purchase acreage within a larger defined area in current. We're grateful to the commission and to Mike Stark and his team for the support and encouragement they provided for our development efforts. We're now seeing power markets increasingly shifting toward more decarbonized generation. This reduces the opportunity for conventional natural gas fire generation. As the world looks for ways to decarbonize both electric power and other sectors, hydrogen production and use has emerged as a leading candidate for this transition. In addition to filling an important role for electric power reliability, hydrogen fuel offers carbon-free energy for heavy-duty transport and other hard-to-decarbonize industrial applications. Let me state that the potential market for hydrogen is huge. We're talking about hundreds of billions of dollars, hundreds of thousands of jobs in the U.S. alone. We've relied as many times that. San Juan County has inherent strengths, both subsurface and above ground, that offer a uniquely powerful set of advantages for jump-starting a clean hydrogen economy and achieving a leadership role in these huge emerging markets. Recognizing these shifts in the marketplace, Libertad's developed a concept for a regional southwestern California clean hydrogen economy, anchored by hydrogen and power production in San Juan County. We've expanded on these concepts to DOE's Hydrogen Earthshot Initiative and our Governor's Hydrogen Roundtable in Iowa, and to DOE Secretary Granholm at our New Mexico Hydrogen Tour in August. The soundness of our hydrogen subconcept is increasingly affirmed in both our public and private sector events. Recent developments and opportunities at federal level are raising the likelihood that San Juan counties can be a recipient of multi-billion dollar funding for a regional hydrogen hub part of the recently enacted Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. That law provides $8 billion to develop at least four regional hydrogen hubs. On the immediate horizon, DOE intends to fund regional clean hydrogen analyses. The projects that are funded would focus on clean hydrogen production, delivery, storage, and in-use in different state or multi-state regions. Selected projects would study potential hydrogen producers, consumers, and unnecessarily connected infrastructure to enable a deployment with substantial engagement of local and regional stakeholders. We see this immediate opportunity as an important stepping stone to that larger hydrogen hub competition. To that end, Libertad is assembling a coalition of interested parties comprised of government entities, equipment vendors, potential hydrogen consumers, research institutions, and environmental groups. Our San Juan County is a key component for our regional hydrogen economy concept. It will be central to our anticipated DOE proposal. However, given the term limits in the original agreement, shifts in the energy market that I've just described, we're asking for three minor changes to our existing agreement so that we can represent continuing site control in our upcoming DOE proposals. The first change is simply an update to the purchaser's intent, expanding upon natural gas fire generation as to include hydrogen production for power generation and other applications. The second change extends the term of the option agreement to allow us to maintain site control for a period of DOE regional market studies and its subsequent hydrogen hub awards. The third change asks San Juan counties to defer but not eliminate option payments during the DOE study periods. And we ask for this because DOE funding typically calls for cost share, which can include in-kind contributions. We believe that deferring option payments could be considered an in-kind contribution by the county in the proposals. In turn, this demonstrates local support compensates the likelihood of winning DOE awards. I note that any deferred payments during the study period would be recouped in full at the time of closing so that the full payment for exercising our option not changed. Again, we thank you for your support today and your consideration here of these changes to our agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Also point out, one of my partners, Joe Molino, is also here on the call. Turn it back over to you, Commissioner. Thank you again.
Joe, can you give us a nutshell breakdown of what the option does?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it would extend, the right to extend the option for two additional 12-month periods. And it would, they would still be able to terminate the agreement. As far as the option payments, we were receiving 2,000 per month. What this would do would be, it would defer that payment until the option is exercised. So at that point, we would be able, if they exercise the option, we'll be able to recoup the 2,000 per month that we're currently deferring. And that's basically it. It's a very simple extension, it's just two more years. We were doing it for six-month periods, now we're doing it for two one-year periods. And I think Mr. Klein can probably correct me if I misstated anything or left anything out.
Does anybody have any questions?
I think you summarized it well. We're not, we're simply asking for time extensions to recognize the changes in the marketplace and the upcoming opportunities to bid on this multi-billion dollar regional hydrogen hub. I think our interests are perfectly aligned with those of the county and we've enjoyed working with the county on this. We see this as a win-win for everyone involved.
Any questions? If not, I'd stand for a motion.
I'm making a motion that we approve.
I'll second. Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Brings us to item number three, which is consideration of application for variance from San Juan County Cannabis Regulation Order. Number 120 for DB Organics, 120 Road 2755, Aztec, New Mexico, presented by Michelle. Hey there.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Can't wear my glasses and use the mask at the same time. I can't see anything. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I come before you today with the results from the variance hearing that we held on November, November 1st is the actual findings of fact. Application was applied for. Then we had a variance hearing that was held, sorry, the 18th of November. And I believe you have the summary from that as well, the findings and conclusions. And we come before you today to get your determination on for or against that variance.
Everybody had a chance to review all the material, anybody have any questions?
We have a, do you have a map, Devin, that I sent you? No? Okay.
I think there's maps in the book.
And there are several maps, I had a simplified one that was set up for you, Ben.
We need simple sometimes.
There gets to be a lot of lines when you look at 300-foot rules all over the place, so. And if there are, if you have questions for them as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Stand for motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
What was the motion? And you still second that? Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest that you amend your motion to accept the findings of the hearing officer? The findings and conclusions of the hearing officer.
Yeah, we'll take that amendment.
I'll second that.
And I, having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? I would assume that the individuals that are doing this are going to follow all the state regulations that are in place.
Yeah, this basically allows them to go ahead and continue in the San Juan County process to achieve their application approval letter, which then they would have to go to the state and receive licensure. And then they would be permitted at the county level after that.
Okay.
So they still have to go through all those steps.
Any other questions, discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to item number four, which is consideration of approval of FEMA AFG grants achieved earlier.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff is requesting approval to apply for the FEMA AFG grants. We apply for them every year. This year, we're requesting firefighting ensembles for extra firefighting, approximately $4,000 to $5,000 a set, 70 to 80 cents. We already budget for everything that is required for them actually, we'll be purchasing that on a regular basis anyways. We're just hoping to get some more federal money and replace more sets. Stand for any questions.
Any questions? I'll stand for a motion.
I move that we approved this for the FEMA AFG grant.
Second that motion.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion, comments, questions? I'm sure he'll stand for any type of question you may have. Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Sorry we didn't ask you any crazy questions. Brings us to item number five, which is consideration of resolution number 21-22-35, supporting the 2022 legislative priorities for New Mexico counties presented by none other than County Manager Mike Stark.
Wow, what an introduction. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did I get some walk-up music in his way?
Work on it.
Okay. Still before you tonight is consideration of resolution 212235, New Mexico County's Board with which Commissioner Forte.